...to order if you would join me by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Nikki.
Mrs. Applebaum, here. Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here.
Mrs. Hopper?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman? Dr. Sieratino? Mr. Jacob?
Here. Citizen statements, if there are any. We didn't receive a sheet, did we?
No.
Okay.
You have to wait till the other meeting, right?
We'll do it again in the other meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve the September 30th rate hearing?
The agenda.
To approve the agenda for the Board of Education Tax Rate Hearing as scheduled for Wednesday, September 30th, 2015. So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. The motion carries five zero. Five dot oh one, hearing on the proposed 2015-2016 tax rate. If I could call on Patty Bedborough, our CFO, to present that to the board.
Tonight, I would like to present to you our tax rate proposal for 2015. Overview for this evening, we'll look at our 2015 assessed values, we'll look at our impact of our protested tax settlements over the past few years, our proposed 2015 tax rates, our voluntary rollback, the impact to a homeowner, a comparison of our total revenues generated, and where we rank with the residential rate in St. Louis County. And then we'll end the evening with questions. So first to begin with our 2015 assessed valuation and a comparison to our 2014 by class of property. So this is net of our existing TIF. So our total assessed valuation post BOME, means Board of Equalization from St. Louis County, so we had a total of $4,336,050,920. Last year, we had $4,156,208,650. So we had a net increase of $179,842,270 in total assessed valuation. The only class of property that had a decrease is our personal property. The summary of what makes up the $179 million and changes, residential new construction, Commercial new construction, $18,373,100. A big portion of that is the RGA building, that is right off of Highway 64. Personal property, a decrease of $3,876,250. Commercial reassessment, increase of $48,133,500. Reassessment increase for residential, $107,429,780. And agricultural assessment increase of $189,270. For a total reassessment increase of 4.3 percent. Broken down as far as class of property, to see this in total, our largest property class is residential, holding 62.18 percent of the total. Personal property, 12.97 percent. Commercial, 24.83. And agricultural at only a .01 percent. Impact of protested tax settlements, probably a broken record by now, but over the past few years, we've paid back millions in settlement of protested taxes dating back to 2005. Two years ago, we submitted the recoupment request, and last year, we took the remaining .2570 in commercial rate increase, which represented one half of the commercial loss from the 2012-2013 calculation. This year, which is our final year of taking that calculation, we are requesting the remaining .2374 on the residential rate. It's approximately $6.4 million. This is the final year to request from this calculation, or we lose that revenue. Recoupment is a one-time increase to the rate. This will be used strictly to build our fund balance, so not to add or fund additional expenditures. We historically budgeted a collection rate of 97 percent over the past few years. You're very well aware that our collection rate's been much lower than that. We're currently budgeting a 96.5 percent collection rate, and we anticipate the additional settlements in this upcoming year from protest. This practice is most likely going to continue for quite some time from our property owners, so from our residential or from our commercial property owners, and we need to continue to calculate the recoupment and roll up the rates to recoup that lost revenue. Our proposed rates are by fund, but they're also by property classes such as residential, commercial, agricultural, and personal property. So that's unique to St. Louis County. We also do it based on our fund, so based on general fund versus the special or teachers' fund, debt service, and capital projects. And we do that based on a blended rate. So our proposed operating levy, so not including debt service, shows an increase of .0399 in our blended rate overall. So the residential rate is proposed at 3.9717, commercial rate of 4.1896, personal property of 3.7379, agricultural 3.8917, for a total blended rate of 3.9980. On this next slide, it demonstrates our total rate, which includes debt service. So keep in mind that our debt service rate increased from 34 cents last year to 49 cents this year with the passage of Proposition S. So our total residential rate will be 4.4617, commercial rate of 4.6796, personal property 4.2279, agricultural 4.3817, for a total blended rate of 4.4880, an overall increase of .1899. The 2015 residential rate includes the .2374 attributed to the recoupment from the prior year's assessments, and the 2014 commercial rate included a .02564 and personal property tax rate of .05. Our proposed rates by fund has a change of the .0399 for total operating rate, so a general rate of 1.3993, special revenue rate of 2.5987, for a total operating rate of 3.998. Our debt service will be hopefully levied at the .49 cents, and a total blended rate of 4.4880. Our voluntary rollback in the residential rate remains at .2382, approximately $6.2 million in revenue, and this ceiling will remain and be untouched. A breakdown of the change in the residential rate as proposed, our 2014 operating residential rate was 3.7343. We had a debt service rate of .34 for a total residential rate of 4.0743. The net impact from reassessment was zero. We should have had a rollback in rate because our assessment, reassessment, was greater than the .8 percent CPI. However, because of the personal property values decreasing, the rate increase then was moved based on the calculation to the residential rate. So the net impact from reassessment on the residential rate was zero. So the increase in debt service rate is the .15, recoupment for 2015, the .2374, for a total proposed residential rate of 4.4617. What is the impact to the average homeowner? If we use the average value of being a $250,000 home, based and with personal property of an estimated $15,000, the actual impact with debt service is $188 to that homeowner. So breaking that down, it would be $110 based on the recoupment, and $78 based on the change in the debt service rate. As a comparison to prior year total property tax revenues, including debt service, so this is at 100 percent levy, which is certainly not what we collect, we collect probably about 96.5 percent is our estimation. Our taxes levied last year in total were $178,638,004. This year, with the proposed property taxes, it is $602,382 for a net increase of $15,964,378. Broken down, reassessment is $2,072,759, new construction, $975,694. Increase in the debt service levy, $6,504,076. Recoupment, $6,412,848 for that net total of $15,964,378. Remember, this is based on total taxes levying, not the actual collected, and recoupment is to be used one time and will help to meet our fund balance growth targets without negatively impacting our student learning. The net impact to our operating budget, if 100 percent is collected, would be $9,46302, but at a 96.5 percentage rate, it's an increase of $9,129. Based on the county rates, in 2014, our total Parkway residential rate was 4.0743. The county average was 5.0558, and we ranked 20th lowest out of the 22 only in St. Louis County districts. In 2015, our estimated rate is 4.4617, and if all the other rates remained exactly the same, we would rank 17th lowest out of the 22. Do you have any questions?
You had me at recoupment.
[laughter]
No, a question I had for you, we showed in new residential construction a certain amount of assessed value, but I think you've indicated too that the county is way behind on new construction, there actually is quite a bit more out there, is that correct?
Correct. And even in the commercial construction, our first spreadsheet had a much lower number than we anticipated even with the RGA building. So we contacted St. Louis County, they did thorough research and found out that in fact they missed that building. So we actually have a meeting set up with the assessor, and Jake Zimmerman will be present at that meeting, I believe it's scheduled for October 27th, where it's not only myself but other area school district CFOs to be attending, because we all have various questions on the assessment not only of new property but of refurbished property too.
Based on your knowledge of talking to other district CFOs, is our collection rate in the norm as far as what others are experiencing?
I think we have shared part of the validity of the rate. This past fiscal year, we actually had less protested tax paid back than we had in previous years, so we had a little bit higher collection rate. I believe it was pretty close to 97 percent. However, we know that in the next two years, they have to become only two years behind in their settlement of protested taxes. So we're anticipating this next year to also be a large protested tax year. I know our neighbor Rockwood had some big hits from protested taxes this current year, so we might have been one of the first districts to have the large hits, us along with Clayton, because we have a lot of commercial property, but I think all the area districts are feeling that.
Do you think there'd be a lot of districts taking the recoupment?
Absolutely.
So the slide that you had towards the end about where we fall among the 22 districts is likely to, we're likely to reclaim our spot at 20 or 17 or whatever it is?
Correct. And even though some of the protests were not residential, because we work on the blended rate with the state auditor's calculations, some of the recoupment goes back to the residential rate. And as you look at our rates and do the comparison, our commercial rate is higher than our residential rate.
And just to clarify, when you say the ranking, we're talking about low, right? We're in the low end?
Exactly. The 20th lowest for last year and the 17th lowest for this upcoming year.
I had a conversation with the Collector of Revenue for the city, and he said that these appeals, that they were kind of like on the tail end of them, that they're kind of going down. Do you have a sense for that in the county? I mean, are we kind of like beyond the hump for getting those appeals settled, or?
Quite possibly, but what we're seeing possibly as a trend is that when property is being refurbished and upgraded, that maybe that property is not being reassessed to a higher level. That if the property was marked maybe as good prior to the updates and comes in as being good, because I think there's only three classes of property. I know Mary Jo Gruber, the CFO of Clayton, had a specific building she was looking at, and the assessed valuation in that building did not change, even though major renovations and updates took place in it. So that is part of our questions to the assessor. So even though there may be less protests, they may not be valuing the current property at maybe a high enough rate.
Any questions to homes that are vacant, that nobody's occupied a new construction, for example? Where do their taxes fit into here?
Well, it's either collected or uncollected, so sometimes if it's held by the mortgage company, the mortgage company pays that taxes. But if it's totally vacated and abandoned, then they do have sales essentially of the property for the back taxes.
Any other questions for Patty?
Thank you very much.
Patty, thank you very much. Also, on our agenda, if there are any citizen comments regarding the tax rate hearing, we could hear those now. If they're not, are there any? Doesn't look like there are. Wonderful. Six point oh, may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the tax rate hearing?
So move.
Aye. The motion carries five zero. We're going to take about an eight-minute break. We'll begin again at seven o'clock. Thank you. Our board meeting, we've had a couple of meetings already. I'd like to ask the audience if you would join us, please, to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special recognition, but before I do that, I just want to recognize some students who are here at two different tables, they're from Lindenwood College. We appreciate you being here. Are all of you looking at being teachers is wonderful. I know at least one's a Parkway West grad, but we welcome all of you back here at the Parkway system, should you so desire. Thank you for being here. Our special recognition tonight, we are recognizing an outstanding Parkway teacher. I know this from personal experience because this teacher taught my child twice and made a big difference in the math that he was able to learn in high school. We're pleased that everyone could join us at this board meeting this evening to recognize her, and I'd like to ask Jennifer Profit, our High School Interdisciplinary Curriculum Coordinator of Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, to come to the podium. Thank you, Jennifer.
President Jacob, members of the board, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. Tonight, we recognize and honor Ruth Knapp, math teacher at Parkway West High School. Ruth began her career in the year 2000. During her years of service, Ruth has worked on countless committees, supported teachers as the K-12 math coordinator, and participated in many organizations at both the state and national level. In the fall of 2009, Ruth earned National Board Certification in Adolescent and Young Adult Mathematics, and in the spring of 2010 was named Parkway West Teacher of the Year, Parkway High School Teacher of the Year, and Parkway School District Teacher of the Year. She is a friend and mentor who is cherished by both teachers and students. To use a mathematical term, this summer, Ruth's accomplishments grew exponentially when she was named by President Obama as a recipient of the prestigious Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. This award is given annually to outstanding K through 12 science and math teachers from across the country. The 108 winners were selected by a panel of distinguished scientists, mathematicians, and educators following initial selection process at the state level. This year's awardees were composed of 7th through 12th grade teachers from all 50 states, the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, U.S. Territories, and the Department of Defense Education Activity Schools. Ruth was given a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation to be used at her discretion, and attended an award ceremony at the White House where she was able to shake the president's hand. Ruth, tonight we celebrate you achieving this amazing honor, and we want to thank you for all you do for Parkway parents, teachers, and students.
I told Ruth that she needs to share with everybody a little bit about her experience at the White House, because I don't know how many people will ever have that experience. So she said she would say a few words about her experience in Washington, D.C.
I got 12 days' notice, so when Obama says, hey, you got 12 days, then you just rearrange your schedule. So we were supposed to be in Canada with my family, and flew in, did some sightseeing, and then we had a couple of days of professional development and some activities with the National Science Foundation, they're wonderful people. And then the kind of big day was on Friday, and very excited to go to the White House and couldn't sleep. We had, I don't know, getting into security was about an hour and a half, got sniffed by a dog, had to say your name at three different checkpoints with your ID, wear all these different kinds of badges, it was, you get it, but it's just very overwhelming, and you're like, wow, I'm at the White House. And then after some professional development during the day, they brought us over to the White House, we went into the East Room. We lined up on risers, the president was running a little bit late, so we were served water in glasses by people in tuxedos with napkins. And then the president just walked in, this kind of side door, my heart skipped a beat, and there you were, regardless of your political persuasion, there you were in the room with the President of the United States, and so many people never get that opportunity. So it was just, he was very genuine, he was very authentic, you didn't feel like he was being handled, or that his comments were prepared. I mean, you thought that he really meant kind of all the words that he said to us, and then we all got to shake his hand and kind of be, the historical presence of being in the East Room where Teddy Roosevelt boxed, and then once he left, then we got about 10 minutes where we were able to go into like the red room, and the green room, and the dining room, where they all had state dinners, and so that was my time at the White House. It was a pretty neat day. They were not allowed to come. No, they weren't. There were some other, we had an awards assembly at the Reagan Building, and so my family, my husband, my sons, and then my mother was able to come, so that was kind of a neat deal. So they were able to come to that, and then my husband was able to come to a dinner and to a breakfast as well. So, yeah, that was an unexpected trip for Team Knapp this summer. So thank you very much for tonight's recognition, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, it's quite an honor for her and for us. I know if I had to go through that, telling my name three times, by the third one, I'd say I'm just some lucky chameleon that is here at this great house, but we're very proud of Ruth, and it's not just this honor, but all the students that she impacts at West over the years has been pretty fantastic. Six point oh, additions, corrections, modifications to the agenda, there are none. Seven point oh, citizen statements. We will begin with, I have several here that have signed up. If you would help us by saying your name and your address when you come up, you'll have three minutes, and we'll begin with Ben Gleason.
Good evening, Mr. Jacob, board members, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover. My name is Ben Gleason, I'm from 501 Kennelworth Lane, Baldwin, 63011. So I do want to thank you for your service to the students of Parkway and for allowing me to speak tonight. I've been involved in Parkway for most of the last 40 years, starting in kindergarten back in the 70s, graduating from West High as a former member of the Special Education Staff, and now as a parent of three children in the Parkway School District. In those 40 years, the district has grown and evolved, as we all know. As scientific evidence about teaching, reading, and math has changed, the curriculum and instruction have changed and evolved as well. How I was taught to read isn't the same as how today's students are taught to read. Similarly, scientific evidence about sexual health has also changed. Therefore, it's appropriate that the district would revise the sexual health curriculum, and I applaud the district for taking on this task. As I understand it, the proposed sexual health curriculum, including information on LGBT issues and sexual violence, seeks to present medically accurate, age-appropriate information in a factual and respectful way. Providing this information, I believe, is crucial for our children for a couple of reasons. One, it's important to give our students accurate information so that they aren't left to learn about these issues through media or other questionable sources. That's in addition to the education we provide as parents in our own homes. Second, it's important to acknowledge, for example, LGBT issues, since we have LGBT students in our families and in our schools. We already acknowledge other variations in the human experience, such as students who have differing physical or cognitive abilities, or the differing experiences of black and white students. Why would we deny the existence of LGBT people by excluding them from our curriculum? To deny the presence of LGBT students and the issues related to that in our community is in some way denying their personhood. This, of course, is unacceptable. Finally, the proposed curriculum emphasizes the importance of treating others with respect. I think most parents want their children to be acknowledged and to be treated with dignity and respect. Bullying and teasing have no place in our schools or in our community. The curriculum doesn't advocate or promote sexual activity, gender identity, or gender expression. What it does advocate is treating others with respect, even if you don't agree with someone's viewpoint. Treating others with respect is a cornerstone of our democratic society, and it's crucial to creating caring school communities. Pardon?
I'm sorry, we're at your three minutes.
Okay, then I will stop and I'll send you some emails.
Appreciate it very much. If I get a name wrong here, forgive me, I think the next one on here is Sarah Crawford. Did I get that right? No? Ms. Crawford?
Dr., sorry, Sarah Garwood, my last name is Garwood, G-A-R-W-O-D.
Yes, okay.
And my address is 63 Meadowbrook Country Club, Baldwin, 63011.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, board members, Mr. Jacob, Dr. Marty, and Mrs. Stover. So I'm a pediatrician, and I specialize in adolescent... So, while I don’t think this curriculum goes far enough, I understand that some kind of compromises had to be made. And I will continue to fight for even more sweeping changes, just as hard as people are fighting that we not change anything at all. So, I think Parkway is doing an excellent job. I applaud the entire work group that’s put together these changes. I think it’s a step so much in the right direction, and I really, really hope that you will vote for this curriculum when you have the opportunity. Thanks.
Mr. James DeLuca.
Hi. I’m a little nervous. My name is James DeLuca. I live at 634 Princeton Gate Drive in Chesterfield. I am a Parkway alum. I also work for Parkway, and I have three students currently enrolled in Claymont. In my job for Parkway, for the past 21 years, I have worked in literally every at-risk and alternative ed program offered at the middle school and the high school. So, I think it’s fair to say I’m very familiar with kids who have been living on the fringe. Anyway, I would like to begin with a thought experiment. I want you to think back over the milestones of your own life and specifically about your relationships. Think back to the heartbreaks of high school, the insecurities of middle school, and then to the excitement of elementary school, when you first realize there were other kids who brought out new and special feelings in you. And as you think back, I want you to remember the moment when you decided to be heterosexual. And now I want you to think back a little further to when you first decided to be a little boy or a little girl. Of course, you don’t remember those two moments because they never happened. It was never a choice, was it? You didn’t choose, you just were who you were and you did the best that you could. There were tears and heartache, successes and failures. You got teased, and you probably did some teasing. Friends and relationships came and went, but always you did the best that you could. Now imagine you are amidst all the physical, emotional, and hormonal upheavals of adolescence. I want you to imagine that you were even more different now, not because of what you have done, but because of what you feel about yourself and how you feel about others. Fortunately, your school is well-equipped to help you better understand who you are and what is happening to you. At every level, your school teaches about relationships, how to stay healthy, how to stay safe, and how to be happy. Well, except not for you, you are too different. You are so different, we can’t even talk about you or acknowledge your experience. We can’t talk about you because we are afraid that if we do, it will encourage other students to be like you. And we don’t want other students to be like you because we don’t like what you represent. Who you are is wrong. That line of thinking is disgraceful and morally indefensible. It is also the foundation upon which most of those who oppose the curriculum rest their arguments. It is unconscionable to negate humans, children, because of what they feel and who they are, and make no mistake about it, refusing to acknowledge them, even if only within the confines of an abstinence-based comprehensive health curriculum, is exactly what you are doing. You are negating those children. And if you choose not to support and protect these children in this very limited way, then Parkway’s mission statement needs to be rewritten because, as it reads now, it would be a lie. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rob Wild.
Thank you. My name is Rob Wild. I live at 337 Greenbrier Lane in Baldwin. I have three children at Claymont Elementary School and a son at Parkway West Middle. I’m here to talk about the health curriculum and represent the perspective from higher education. I have devoted my career to being an administrator in higher education. I’m currently an Associate Vice Chancellor for Students at Washington University. And I applaud the board for considering these important changes related to gender identity in the new health curriculum. These changes, as the other speakers have said, are important for the health and safety of our children and are based on our current scientific understanding of gender. Our priority as a Parkway community should be the well-being and future success of every single one of our students, and we want our students to be healthy, we want our students to be safe, and we want our students to feel supported. I have devoted my career to working with college students and the faculty and staff who educate them. Every day, I work with talented young adults, college students with bright and promising futures. But college can be hard, some of our young people struggle, and occasionally, they fail. One of the most well-documented challenges facing college students today are the issues associated with mental health, namely depression and suicide. There are many reasons a college student can struggle with depression. Sometimes depression happens when a person faces questions about their gender identity or their sexual orientation. When we push individuals, especially young people, to conform their gender identity to their biological sex, we can do irreparable harm. I’m not going to repeat the statistics that Dr. Garwood just cited, but there are many statistics to support this. If you were to ask my colleagues in higher education, counselors, faculty, and those responsible for the health and safety of our students what we can do as a community to better support them and lessen incidents of depression and suicide, they will tell you that improving education related to gender identity in our middle and high schools is a critical step in the right direction. I know all of us are here because we love our children and we care about their future. This proposed change to the Parkway curriculum is the right thing for us to do together for our children and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle Hobson. Hope I got that right.
Hi. My name is Michelle Hoberman, and I live at 1515 Mason Hill Court in Town and Country. I have three kids in the Parkway system, two at Mason Ridge, and one who has just entered Parkway West Middle. My daughter, for the first time in her life, experienced discrimination, but not by the students, by her teachers. And I find this unacceptable. Information about a play, about a musical, was given out on one day, one day only, on Rosh Hashanah, where my daughter was obviously not at school. And when I asked her about the information, she said, “Well, I don’t know. He hasn’t spoken to me about it.” And I called the teacher to get the information for her to sign up, and he said, “Well, I just wasn’t aware.” After speaking with the principal of the school, she made it very clear she absolutely gives all the information out to every teacher, and it is up to them to absolutely take hold of that and make sure that all kids are included. She, following up, the drama teacher did not give the same information to my daughter or to me that was afforded to the other kids, and therefore, she was unprepared. And this isn’t just happening at Parkway West. I’m hearing it from other parents as well, and it’s very concerning and heartbreaking that in 2015, our children have to face something that they really shouldn’t ever have to face, and she doesn’t understand it. And this isn’t also happening just with the Jewish population, it’s happening with Muslims, Seventh-day Adventists, and other minorities. You know, it’d be like giving a test on Christmas where it’s just not fair to do. And so, I would encourage some equal process to be maintained throughout all Parkway, to instill in these educators how important it is to recognize people of different faiths and make a change in our system so that people don’t feel left out. And I’ll be here to follow up and see if things are changing. Thank you.
Thank you too. We appreciate that. Next would be Leba Levine.
It’s Leba Levine, 1910 Kings Row Manor. And I have one who is a senior in college and one who is a senior at Parkway North. And I’m here in support of Michelle, and because I’m one with older children, I know that this has been a concern with holidays for many faiths and many cultures in the Parkway District. It is a fabulous district with an array of many different faiths and many, many cultures. The calendars are out there for, right now, it’s like a hallmark, everything is out there. So, these holidays and these events are calendared, they just have to be treated with tender loving care and put into the district, um, calendar at the beginning of the year. And as all holidays change, especially for Muslim and Jews, our calendar year changes each year. So, the days are not the same each year. So, I’m just basically standing here to be a visual reminder that that calendar needs to be looked at, and when my kids are gone out of the Parkway District, I’ll still be somewhere around and making sure that it’s adhered to.
Thank you very much. Susan Jack.
Good evening. My name is Susan Jack, and I live at 636 Savannah View Way in Town and Country, 63017. I would like to ask the school board why it has taken seven years to be able to fix the religious holiday issue. Now, religious holidays are an excellent way for a community to be able to come together, for children to be able to feel as if they are loved, supported, and being able to celebrate with their friends and family in the religion of their choice. I would ask the school board why it has taken such a long period of time for those children to be able to celebrate with their families and friends and not be penalized for it. I await your answer. Thank you very much.
Very much. And Edward Winehouse.
Good evening. Edward Winehouse, property owner at 102 Ladue Air Drive, Creve Court. I’m an adjunct professor at Washington University, and I run a management consultancy. I removed my children from the district after your mishandling of Hittit Jude Day in 2008. I’m going to ask the same question today as I did then. Will the adult in Parkway please stand up? I read Michelle’s Facebook post, who just spoke, on the Jewish holiday of Yom Kippur. The posts were forwarded around multiple times by multiple people. Michelle writes, “It is 100% unacceptable in this day and age for a child to have to deal with religious persecution.” So far, three teachers at Parkway West Middle that she describes specific incidences. And she finishes with, “Shame on you educators.” Michelle calls it religious persecution. Look over the last seven years since Hittit Jude Day. Look at what happened to Justin, one of the Hittit Jude Day victims, as reported in the Jewish Light. Just months ago, Justin tried to stay in the Parkway West Middle environment, but he couldn’t. The district made promise after promise. No doubt Parkway wants parents such as Michelle to believe the district will handle it again. With whose help? Same leaders that failed this community since Hittit Jude Day? Will the adult willing to take some responsibility at Parkway please stand up? Seven years ago, I presented this school board with a petition for more than 200 parents and taxpayers calling for an investigation into Hittit Jude Day. What little we learned before your stonewalling was shocking. I will leave it on the public record for an adult at Parkway who is willing to take some responsibility to learn from. Parkway West Middle teaches that the Germans were not responsible for the Holocaust. A teacher knew concurrently Jewish students were being targeted on Hittit Jude Day. A district employee was aware of the plan for Hittit Jude Day three days prior, and yet no adult at Parkway stood up to take responsibility. Again, I ask, will someone, an adult, please stand up and take some responsibility? Will it be Ms. Feldman, who called me and yelled at me for finding out this information and instructed people how to un-sign the petition? I ask, was rallying troops to fight your accountability seven years ago directly responsible for the recent behavior of Parkway teachers? I have the email. If so, will you be the person at Parkway who stands up and takes some responsibility? I volunteer helping Parkway Spark student entrepreneurs. I’ll be glad to help you if asked, but please, just make sure the adult who does ask stands up and takes responsibility to fix it. Fix it. Thank you. I’m presenting a Freedom of Information Act request, which I will follow up on.
Thank you very much. We thank each one of you, and you will receive a letter in response, and we appreciate you making these comments tonight. I think we’ll take just a quick break and then get back to the meeting. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for Wednesday, September 30, 2015?
Some move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries 5-0. 9.0, resolutions, there are none. 10.0, communications, calendar meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 21, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. here at Central Middle School, with an anticipated closed session at 6:00 p.m. 10.02, board liaison reports. Anyone?
I had the opportunity to go hear Gary Marks talking about his 21 trends and was just very pleased to hear his remarks. And as we sit here, even as school board members or as parents, and trying to think about what the future looks like for education, his book is very interesting. I gave it to my son to read and say, “Here, this is what you need to read.” He’s like, “Yeah, thanks, Mom. Let me get back to whatever.” But I was very impressed by him. Thank you, Dr. Marty, for bringing him in. So, I really welcomed his remarks.
Since your son is going to be one of those graduates in, what is that, 20?
He will be 2020.
Yeah, and then he’s going to be 65 in, what, 20, was that, 20? What did Gary say?
2063.
26.
Yeah, I don’t know.
I just wanted to say, just by, that Gary had a wonderful time in Parkway, and he was very complimentary of the opportunities he had and the students he met, the staff, community members. He was very complimentary of our addressing some of the future needs. Not all of them, perhaps, but that we’re certainly being attentive. So, he had a great time here, and I really enjoyed him, and I think a lot of our folks that had a chance to work with him did, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of attending the Spark pitch competition. That is just a phenomenal, I mean, if you have not experienced the Spark pitch, it’s amazing what these kids accomplished in such a short time of coming up with the concept, making calls, and putting this little presentation together. And if you haven’t seen it, I mean, one of these, the cold shoulder blanket, I’m in, sign me up. But there’s about a dozen projects here, that they’re all the ideas, and it was really amazing. I know several of us were there. I have another one. I have a list here. I went to the North Early Childhood Center Open House. What a neat facility, and they fixed that up so quickly, and I’m very proud to have that facility up there. And it was a great tour. If I was a little kid, I’d want to go there and play. And let me see, the West High College Fair, I attended the West High College Fair, packed. I don’t think there was a parking spot available all along that school and over towards the middle school. But it was a great function, it was great to see colleges that we’ve all been to. And I’ll finish with this one. Band competition. I went to Parkway, it was a band competition at Lafayette, and it was Central, West, and South were competing there. West took second in their division, South took third in their division, and South overall took sixth out of 10.
I had the pleasure of attending the Spark pitch competition. That is just a phenomenal, I mean, if you have not experienced the Spark pitch, it's amazing what these kids accomplished in such a short time of coming up with the concept, making calls, and putting this little presentation together. And if you haven't seen it, I mean, one of these, the cold shoulder blanket, I'm in, sign me up. But there's, there's about a dozen projects here that they're all, all the ideas, and it was really amazing. I know several of us were there. I have another one. I have a list here. I went to the North Early Childhood Center Open House. What a neat facility and they, they fixed that up so quickly. And I'm very proud to have that facility up there. And it was a great tour. If I was a little kid, I'd want to go there and play. And let me see, the West High College Fair, I attended the West High College Fair, packed. I don't think there was a parking spot available all along that school and over towards the middle school. But it was a great function. It was great to see colleges that we've all been to. And I'll, I'll finish with this one. Band competition. I went to Parkway, it was a band competition at Lafayette. And it was Central, West, and South were competing there. West took second in their division, South took third in their division, and South overall took sixth out of 10 in the finals. So very proud of those band kids.
Well, I went to the Spark thing too. That's always great, but I went and saw the truly awesome scoreboard at Parkway North. Now I can walk out my backyard and hear the football games. But it was, it was really neat. It was great. And I think a bunch of us attended a rather spirited seminar on the health and physical education curriculum last night. So that was always fun, so.
Beth, do you have anything?
I, I would only be repeating what my colleagues have already said.
Thank you very much. I'd have to say at the College Fair, it was so exciting. There was so much energy in that building that night in that gymnasium. I wanted to sign up for college again. It was, it was exciting to see schools from all over the nation there and, and having a great time talking to some of our students and their parents. Just yesterday, Dr. Marty and I attended the ceremony for the Blue Ribbon Award at McKelvey Elementary. And my, that was wonderful. We had two of our state representatives there, Sue Meredith and Bill Otto, as they helped to present resolutions to the kids. But 400 kids are so on the gymnasium floor, they're so well behaved. And when they, at the end, they put a video up that they would cheer certain things. And then they started singing in unison, "Best Day of My Life." And they would do that, "Ooh, ooh, 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 ooh." And they all did, 400 did it, did it together and, well, a lot better than I did, but they, they were just wonderful and they were so proud of what they had accomplished. And, and there's a lot involved in that, not just the academics, but the way that they treat each other, the character-based things that they do in that school. And I talked to some of the teachers afterwards and complimented them and they said, "Well, the reason this works is because we do everything the same. We treat kids the same, we discipline them the same, we challenge them the same, we're all on the same page as we work with these kids." So if that's what blue, uh, blue ribbon schools are all about, then we're in good hands when we, we have three of them now in our, in our district.
Actually, four.
Four.
We can't forget.
Oh, I can't forget West Middle.
Yeah, West Middle. We need to, uh, West Middle. Well, yesterday, I, we just need to say that Arnie Duncan, uh, United States Department of Education announced the Blue Ribbon winners and Parkway has two. We had two last year, Mason and Henry, and now as Mr. Jacobs said, McKelvey and West Middle School. So Dr. Meredith is going to be accompanying those schools to Washington DC, I think the second weekend in November. And both West Middle and McKelvey will be honored as this year's recipients, probably among three to 400 students nationwide, or schools nationwide. So very fortunate. Parkway's had, if you take those 16 schools that have been Gold Star schools last year, we have four of them who have Gold Star first and then Blue Ribbon. So quite an honor, quite a tribute to our, to our community, to our staff, as Chris said, who work very, very hard, and certainly to our students. Can't forget them and their, their good work and their, their achievement.
It's a lot of work, a lot of teamwork, when you consider that there are over 25,000 schools that theoretically are in competition for this kind of award. Also, we had a subcommittee meeting with the finance people and HR and that was wonderful. I think one of the parts I enjoyed the most was they're almost ready to show to the entire board, but they, we got to see a sneak peek of, of what's coming up next year for the bond and specifically the things that they intend to do at North High School over the next two summers. And that's only about half the work that'll get done, but it's, it's marvelous what we're going to be able to do there and to improve that school. They'll be the second school to get a food court. So anyway, that, that was wonderful. And then the Student Services Subcommittee too. Were you here for that? No?
It's not my committee.
I went because, was it you that somebody couldn't go? You, okay, you want to talk about it or just?
You can, I talked about it plenty.
Well, nothing happened there. No, Chelsea does a wonderful job of, of helping us understand what she's doing in, in the area of character education and trying to support our students and with some very, very difficult issues at times. And some of those are exacerbated by the fact that we are Title IX recipient also, so we have to look at some of the federal laws too that, that. But thank you. We always enjoy those meetings at your office and, and appreciate very much you keeping the board updated on what you're doing. There is an upcoming subcommittee meeting with the Teaching, Learning, and Accountability. That will be on October 15th at 3:00 PM for those that are on that subcommittee. 11.0, action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the September 30th, 2015 board materials? May I have a second? Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed of these consent items? All right. If not, then all in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? The motion carries 5-0. And 12.0. If there, this is Mrs. Patty Bedborough, our CFO. If there are any questions from the board members for her on the adoption of the 2015, 2016 tax rate. We had a meeting a little earlier, a tax rate hearing, but if there are any questions that have come to your mind that you would like to ask her, she did a pretty complete job. They were 18 frames. And compliment you again for the completeness and helping us understand. And I'm really proud of too, to say that the recruitment funds will be going there to, I don't know how we were going to rebuild the fund balance, but this goes a long ways towards doing that. It'll strengthen the, the district in many, many ways. So if there are no questions, and I don't see any, then may I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education adopt the tax rates by category as presented and the blended tax rate for the Parkway School District for 2015, 2016 in the amount of up to 4.4880 to be distributed with a special revenue fund rate of $2.59.87, general fund rate of $1.39.93, capital projects rate is zero, and the debt service fund a rate of 49 cents. Nikki, if we could have a roll call on that?
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Patty. 13.0, policy review, there are none tonight. 14.0, reports. This is a preliminary conversation on the Fine Arts Program Evaluation. I'd like to call on Dr. Nathan Tyson, who is our Director of Data Management and Research.
President Jacob, Board of Directors, Dr. Marty, Mrs. Stover, very good to see you all this evening. We are here to talk about the, and go through the preliminary discussion or conversation for the Fine Arts Program Evaluation. I was hoping though, maybe to do, break it up into two parts. And so maybe this first part is just kind of a general refresher on program evaluation. And then we'll jump into the Fine Arts Program Evaluation conversation. So to start here, I just, if you wouldn't mind directing your attention to the screen, I have about a one-minute video that I just wanted us to watch together and then a brief commentary afterwards.
One minute, one minute please. Time, thank you. Would you all please put down your pens and bring your papers to the front of the room. Well done. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, too late. I've got 24 minutes, about time. You failed. Sorry.
Excuse me, do you know who I am?
I'm sure you have no idea.
Good.
So.
Good job.
I would really, in addition to this being a funny 1999 commercial for the lottery in New Zealand, it's a great metaphor for program evaluation in Parkway. And so I just want to explain that for a moment. First of all, I would say that the teacher, professor represents, in this particular, you know, video that we watched, inflexibility and rigidity, reluctance to change, the old guard. We've always done it this way, that kind of mentality. Really, for this teacher, it was more about the content and the rules and the traditions than it was about the students and the student learning, than it was about knowing the students' names. The teacher is, in this one, you know, more of that sage on the stage versus the guide on the side. I mean, he was right in front, he was in control, he was in charge. And, and rather than there being sort of this fun, happy learning environment, it was really a hostile environment and, and sort of a gachia approach to education. And so, of course, I think too, that the connection to mission that this professor/teacher demonstrated was very weak, if present at all. And so, but I think on the other hand, if you look at the student, I think the student represents something very different. The student represents one who is capable and confident and curious, represents the Parkway mission. I would say his capability lies in that he used his brain to figure out that since the professor didn't know his name, he wouldn't be able to find the exam in the middle of the stack of papers. Also, the student was thinking several moves ahead of the professor, kind of like a chess master would. So I think very capable. I also think competent. He stood up to the professor while remaining as cordial as possible, given the circumstances. I think he was curious. First, he identified the problem, right? My teacher, you know, if my, if my paper doesn't get in the stack of papers, I'm going to get an F. And so I've got to get my paper in the stack of papers. So how do I do this? What can I try? And ultimately, he came up with the solution to the problem. I think the student also represents a challenge to the status quo, represents pushing back against unreasonable ideas or positions that are rooted, that are not rooted in common sense. I think the student has kind of this refreshingly clever reaction and response to something completely absurd. And I think really, in a nutshell, the student represents our program evaluation process. Now, I would say, of course, you know, this is, we're kind of exaggerating here. So in Parkway, you know, Parkway is nothing like this because our teachers are fantastic and we have great teachers and they have great classroom management strategies and they connect their work to the mission and they love the kids. But I still think that the take-home message applies here, which is, you know, really program evaluation is meant to uncover or discover the areas needing attention and the areas that we really need, and how we're going to pay attention to those areas and really a pushback against some of the status quo. And really, in our program evaluation process, the areas needing attention present themselves as part of our main findings. And then also how we pay attention specifically to those areas, that's, those are found in the recommendations. So I just thought that that video was maybe a good way to just kind of recap, hopefully, kind of our big idea for program evaluation and how we want to keep pushing, pushing, pushing to make sure that our district is the best it can be when it comes to mission and then when it comes to students and student learning. So that, all having been said, I'm going to go ahead and plug in here. We're going to switch over. I think I should, I think I have, I think if I do that catalyst control. Thank you. Okay, Fine Arts Program Evaluation. As usual, you know, we're going to go through, we had a really fantastically large group of, of fine arts teachers coming together and they did a great job and I think we had over 100. And they just really did a great job brainstorming and coming to consensus around our main topics and then also around our guiding questions. So first of all, though, I would offer some thanks. As usual, Jeff Lackey, who's going to be really the one kind of heading up this particular program evaluation, Doesi Kirchhoff, Elisa Meredith, the Fine Arts Teachers, Project Parkway participants, members of the Board of Education, all those who are or will become involved in this program evaluation. Here are the main topics that the group settled on, curriculum, assessments and achievement, resources, communication, and facilities. First main topic is curriculum. Is the curriculum vertically aligned for all fine arts, K-12? And is it aligned with state and national standards? And is the curriculum equitable for all students? Is the curriculum relevant to an ever-changing global community? Does the curriculum foster curiosity and creativity? Does the curriculum prepare students for future artistic endeavors and/or careers? Assessments and achievement, main topic number two. Do our current assessments adequately reflect student knowledge? Are our current assessments authentic to content area? And are they grade level appropriate? Do our assessments meet the needs of all students? Continue on. Are our students able to effectively express their content knowledge through their product slash performance? Does student product performance meet or exceed community expectations? Are our students competitive and recognized at a high level? And how do our current Parkway systems and structures allow for maximum student achievement and involvement in fine arts? Main topic three is on resources. Are resources distributed across levels, schools and programs to ensure equity in student development and learning? Do teachers have up-to-date and relevant technology that they are trained to use? Do our resources and learning environment match the curricular needs? Is professional development accessible, effective, relevant, and timely? Main topic four is communication. Is communication effective and timely among members of the community? How effectively is Parkway's fine arts program connected to the community? How much does the community know about the fine arts program? And finally, facilities. How do Parkway fine arts instructional spaces support a high-quality fine arts curriculum? How do Parkway fine arts performance spaces and exhibition spaces support a high-quality fine arts curriculum? How does existing technology within the facility support a high-quality fine arts curriculum? And finally, how do Parkway fine arts facilities support and integrate community activities and performances? So that's what we have to date. Obviously, we're very interested in the Board of Education's thoughts, members of the board, if you have any, you know, anything that you think maybe we should include as part of this study. If there's a main topic that we're missing, we'd love to hear it. If there are some guiding questions or some things that we should be also considering as we, as we go through this fine arts program evaluation, it'd be great to hear. I will say, not only did Jeff coordinate having the teachers all come together, over 100 of them, which was just fantastic, but he also took and, and shared at Project Parkway. We didn't have a large turnout there among parents, but we did have a representation of parents and so we were able to go through everything I just went through tonight and, and get the parents' perspective as well. So I think, I think Jeff kind of coordinated in doing a good job getting, getting some good feedback already this far in the process. But again, we're very happy to hear from you all and, and if there's something that we're missing that maybe we should be including.
Nathan, I just have a question for you in part of this. Are we looking at how fine arts might enjoy partnerships with some of those that especially are in the fine arts area?
You mean outside of the school district?
Yes.
I think that's a, I think that's a great area to explore. I don't think it was contained in any of those guiding questions specifically, but we will certainly include that if that's something you're interested in us including.
I think it's a great way for some of these kids, especially in the drama and some of those areas, to, to get introduced to real, well, the plays and things they do are real. But here's some things of larger venue that be, that might end up being part of their livelihood.
Good feedback.
It's amazing how great minds work. Because I, I, I think that's missing and I, I mean, we've, we've got stages here, we've got so many resources, you know, just wonderful, rich. And I just, somewhere embedded in there could be an opportunity, I think, to find out if there's more we could do in partnering, but also the career aspect, which I think was contained in there a little bit.
Yeah.
But I think there's some great opportunities to have mentors.
Partnering, yeah.
And have experience for our kids. So I really think that would be an area to explore.
Okay.
I hope Jeff agrees.
I'm sure he, I'm sure he does.
He's, he's been active in some of that already, so.
Experience learning with the Spark and all that stuff. I mean, obviously, I think that the more hands-on kids get with regards to, I mean, not just theater, but all, all other kinds of, you know, I mean, I'm thinking like, just like graphic design, that sort of thing. So there's a pretty, pretty wide spectrum you're looking at here. It's a big undertaking.
Is there anything in our graduate surveys that follows students that were really active in the fine arts in high school? Our honors choirs, our actors, our, our stage management, all of those kids, if they're able to pursue those types of, that type of learning and perhaps that type of career, you know, one leading into another in college? Or do they just kind of do it because they're interested in high school, but when they get to college, they move on?
And I, I think that's a great point. We, with the graduate survey, I don't think we really touch on that probably to the degree you're thinking of, but that's a great point because in the past during program evaluations, we have chosen to survey graduates, especially one, two or maybe three years out, and we've gotten great feedback from them. So, I think, I think maybe as we approach this program evaluation, we can keep in mind a targeted survey out to graduates.
Right.
Asking questions that you're, that are getting at which.
Well, fine art students, kids that were real active in fine arts.
Sounds good.
And then you don't have to bother the rest of them.
There you go.
You know, it just struck me too, that sometimes there are, are wonderful people who are from the Saint Louis area who have gone on and done well. For example, John Goodman, Kevin Klein, our wonderful actors.
Jon Hamm.
Jon Hamm.
I'm sorry, did I say that loud enough? Jon Hamm?
He just got an Emmy, finally. It, it just seems like maybe this is something that, maybe it's outside of this too, but these might be people that could be approached that could either come in and speak to our fine art students or maybe in some way they could help us figure out a way to, you know, maybe there's a, I don't know, just some way to get them involved so that our kids feel like there's a real connection to, and I think they might be willing to, to do something for their hometown.
Mm-hmm. It's a good idea.
Even though they're not Parkway grads.
Well, we just had a Hall of Famer who I graduated with that, that wound up getting a job doing all the music for, for like video games and that sort of thing. It was really interesting.
Any other questions?
Nathan, I have one more.
Sure.
I was really interested in cross-curricular work. I was invited to attend a program here that the art teacher did in connection with an English language arts class in eighth grade where they studied the Holocaust through their reading and through their artwork. And the culmination of the program, they had a Holocaust survivor who speaks to local audiences frequently come in and talk to this one particular class of kids. And I have never in my life seen children so moved by something that they experienced in class. And I'm wondering if we have any other cross-curricular programs out there that could really move kids. I mean, these kids were standing in line to meet this woman and they were crying. It was really amazing. And their artwork and their writing, just really, really wonderful. So, I'd love to see that in other places.
That's a good, good comment.
There's been kind of a subtle movement about STEM and then STEAM, right? Adding that arts component. So, I know there's good questions on the curriculum, but I don't know if there's a way. I think that's kinda what Mrs. Feldman's talking about, is that integration with other, other areas. Is that, is that, it's STEAM, isn't it?
You're right.
The extension of STEM, right, into the arts.
Any other questions? I think it's a fantastic start and if we can answer those things successfully and come up with plans, there's no doubt that the program, that the Fine Arts will improve dramatically.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanted to recognize a couple of other students who were here that I missed earlier. These are from Fontbonne. I don't know if they're, they're in close proximity to Washington University, but we appreciate having you here. They're, one's a Parkway West grad, right? So, and they wanna be teachers, so we're awfully glad to have you here tonight. And in fact, I think they're studying curriculum and how it's developed, so the lady on the front here in red could really help you a lot.
She does have enough to do.
All right. Thank you very much. Work session, 15.0, there is none. 16.0, call for a special meeting, there is none. The next scheduled closed session, it's anticipated that will be held on Wednesday, October 21st, 2015 at 6:00 PM here at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. 18.0, recess, no. I'm going to ask 20.0 here for a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting and we will continue in closed session in the library. So, all in favor, our first motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries 5-0 and we are adjourned from the regular session.